Jen, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you. Everybody all right? Good evening, everybody. I'm gonna call us to order for June 23rd. I'm Mayor Blackburn and here we are at City Council. First, we're gonna remember to silence our cellphones. And then, Council President Rivera will read the land acknowledgement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we gather today, we respectfully acknowledge that the land on which the city of Hood River sits is the ancestral home of indigenous peoples. This includes the Ness Purse, Umatilla, Warm Springs, Yakama, and other tribes who stewarded this land for generations. We recognize the lasting impact of colonialism and commit to working together for a more just and sustainable future. I also want to add that we are not presuming assumptions of what we think will work to better serve and support our Native American communities. And we are working with those government agencies to give us their recommendations on what they wish to see.
Thank you, Gladys. Let's stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
It's to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any agenda additions or corrections, Abigail?
No, ma'am, we do not.
I do not have a sheet that anyone has indicated they wish to speak. I see there are some folks here. Jen, is anyone online or did you all wish to speak to us tonight? Great. We'll move on to, we have no presentation, so the next will be the recess to consider the urban renewal agenda.
Thank you. I called to order a meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency Board at 6:02 on June 23rd, 2025. Are there any agenda additions or corrections?
Chair, there are none.
Thank you. Do we have anyone signed up to give testimony either in person or online?
No.
Great. Moving to the consent agenda, it includes the minutes of the June 9th meeting where we adopted the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget. Is there any motion to approve or does any member wish to request an edit?
I move to approve the minutes.
I have a first from Ben, a second, second from Anna. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. If there are no additional, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. Moving to regular business, I will call the agency administrator up for two items.
Thank you, Vice Chair Rivera and members of the Agency Board. The first item in front of you tonight under regular business is a transfer of property from the waterfront urban renewal district to the city. It's the Nichols Basin passive, natural, passive park natural area just on the southern boundary of the Nichols Basin water and just north of the roadway over by the Hampton Inn. And this is about us coming towards the end of the waterfront district's life and orderly closure. And all urban renewal property eventually becomes property of the city. So this is the only piece of property that the waterfront district owns. We came to own it through a development deal that produced the Hampton Inn development when it was being built by NATO developers. And so it was really part of a really capstone of a deal that brought everyone together. The Nato's owned that piece of property as well, so we negotiated a price, I believe it was $395, purchased it from the Nato's with money borrowed from the Nato's at 0% interest that would be repaid by the tax increment generated specifically from what became branded the Hampton Inn. So basically, the Hampton Inn tax increment purchased that passive park for us. And the intention is to leave it in a natural state and let it do its riparian work and improve water quality and just be a natural area for ever on. So this is really, I just wanna give that history, but this is really much more of an administrative, just perfunctory exercise to move ownership from one tax exempt governmental entity to another tax exempt governmental entity. No fiscal impact, no liability, just something that needs to get done sooner or later. So there's a suggested motion in your packet and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any question? I do have a couple of questions. So once this is transferred over to the city, do we have a clear plan or resources for managing any potential long-term environmental liabilities or restoration?
Well, it's never intended to be developed. So that's where like a phase one, phase two, and remediation and cleanup would need to happen if we're gonna develop it. But as long as it sits in its natural state and with no intention to use it for anything other than a natural passive park, I'm not aware of any obligation on the city to do anything.
Thank you. I do have another question. As we think about future use, has, what have the conversations maybe historically been around? How would we involve community input for envisioning of what this could potentially be?
Yeah, I don't believe it can be anything other than a natural passive park. I can confirm that. I was looking at the paddle records and there's some easements and some agreements in place and on the property, and I believe they require it to continue to be a passive park. But if you're, if you'd like me to follow up on that, I can confirm and send that out to the Agency Board.
Yeah, so number three for the IGA talks about the project and purpose. And that's where I was asking around what the future use is gonna be like based off of what it can only be in bullet point number three. I'm happy to read that out loud if folks would like that. A trail connection along the river, Columbia River waterfront, including the use of existing pedestrian bridge over Hood River, once transferred to the city, the city agrees to use a property for purposes set forth in this section.
Yeah, that was taken from, I believe, the resolution that acquired the property.
Okay.
And the trail connection has been made, but it's been made by the creation of the raised up sidewalk.
Okay, great. Mr. Mayor?
As the resident historical sage on this, I was on council at this time and it was a super complicated thing. And getting to, yes, with the setback of the hotel was so important. And I remember it being, as Will's describing, that it'll just be, you know, shrubbery. And there was quite a bit of, you know, taking out invasives and putting in, you know, more native plants. And I think Riverkeeper would maybe be involved, but to me, it feels like the way it is now was the intent of the way it was intended to be. And it's just, it makes sure that the hotel is set back, but that the Nichols got compensated for going that amount of space. So I'm not pleased with how it's kind of gotten to the desire to stay.
Just a clarifying question. This language, our own language, this is a natural area, not a park? It's, now I was just kinda saving this for City Council. It is a, it's a clear question, but there will be a difference later on.
Yes, I understand where you're going with that in regards to the city charter amendment. Let me follow up with that with you. I don't, you know, it needs to be transferred one way or the other. But if that becomes, if we wanna start looking at potentially changing its use in the future, I can follow up and with maybe some information that shed light one way or the other.
Yeah, I was planning on holding that one until City Council, but given, given that we're talking about now, I figured I would ask that question now. So, yeah, so if we, if we can know which one is, I believe right now it's just a natural area and not a park. Thanks.
Yeah, I was a reporter for the head of our news at the time and wrote at least one or some of the articles about it. And that's my recollection as well as that it was, the intent was that it was never to be like anything that was developed. Quite the opposite, that it was gonna be, you know, like a passive, you know, riparian area. And I also recollected that it was like Riverkeeper that was doing the like initial work on it. But Grant has a good question.
Well, in addition to those questions, what sort of budget could we expect to see? So that as we think about future budgets to ensure that we're including that in our plans as far as the resources needed to maintain the land?
Yeah, I do remember that there was $5,000 approximately that was paid to the Riverkeeper. And I believe the Parks and Rec District was somehow involved. The money may have come from the Parks and Rec District. And I believe that was a one, just one time expense to do some work on the property. There's no ongoing budget in the Urban Renewal Agency to do any maintenance or upkeep. And so the city would not need to assume any sort of maintenance or upkeep responsibility itself.
Are there any other questions from Council? There is a motion on page six.
I move the Urban Renewal Agency Board authorize the agency administrator to execute an intergovernmental governmental agreement with the city of Hood River for the transfer of ownership of Nichols Basin.
Thank you. I have a first from Amanda.
Second.
Second from Grant. Any additional discussions? Great. Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. The second item is a contract amendment with DKS Associates related to their work doing preliminary engineering and design and cost estimation for proportionate share district for the Mount Adams intersection improvements. So this is where Mount Adams intersects with Cascade Avenue slash US 30. So this is an extremely important intersection and bottleneck holding up the development potential of essentially all of the West Side District or most all of the West Side District, especially the portions that are undeveloped currently. It is already, it is currently operating, the north and south bound movements are operating at a failed level of service. And so that has essentially stopped any sort of densification of the West Side District and has already contributed to losing a large multifamily development in its pre-development stages. So that's where it has risen to a high priority level for an initial project for the West Side District. So we had initially scoped just what being called 10% engineered designs, which is basically just good cost estimation and, and a good enough engineering to know what the footprint is gonna be in order to do right away acquisition. And then the question was intended to go next to the City Council to see if they wanted to set up a proportionate share district, which is a geographically bound cost allocation methodology that we've used to help fund Second and Oak and also Cascade and Rand in the past. So it's something that we have experience using. And it's where developers who are proposing a project that would put trips through a failed intersection instead of paying to improve the intersection themselves, which could be very expensive and include creating excess capacity for not only their development but others, they can They can just have a set dollar amount that they have to pay in order to get um their approval. And then we mix that with other revenue sources and we um eventually build um the infrastructure. So the idea was to create that proportionate share district before we did any other work on this, so that we would have a funding source for that work. Um, we had discussed that with ODOT and uh they had agreed, um but then after um executing this contract with DKS, they said, actually, you should do a higher level of analysis even now at this early stage. Uh, what's called an intersection control evaluation. That's a standardized ODEP uh ODOT um analysis that basically looks at um trying to determine the very best, most effective, most efficient intersection control and documenting the methodology and the decision. And so uh, you know, we already have a roundabout as an alternative in our transportation system plan. ODOT has accepted our transportation system plan, but this will be kind of that last step to say, yep, we've put uh all the information out, looked at it objectively, and yes, we're we're going with a roundabout and we all agree on this. Um, so ODOT said move that up. Uh, so uh we asked DKS for a contract amendment. Um, and the contract amendment will increase the price by twenty, about twenty-three thousand dollars for a total not to exceed budget of about seventy-two thousand dollars. And the um uh adopted budget for next year includes eighty thousand dollars for this project, so I already included uh some budget for extra scope um and moving this project forward, so this contract amendment is within budgeted um resources. So I think that's about the long and short of it, uh but if you have any questions, um please let me know.
Ben?
Yeah, um regarding that budget, um I was just curious of, you know, since it was an eighty thousand dollar budget and it was originally forty-eight thousand for the contract, um was there anything else that was gonna be in that uh project budget, or is this the only thing allocated for? My concern was just like oh, now there's only nine thousand dollars. Like, was there anything else allocated in that eighty grand?
No, the eighty thousand dollar budget was essentially working backwards to how much money do we have? Um, and knowing that this was essentially our uh first and most important project um allocating money that we so that we could continue um be it right away acquisition, be it additional analyses, just do what we needed to do to keep this project uh moving. And um here go, uh here it is.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? No, I I do have a a couple of questions, but it sounds like this is, did you have a question? Sorry. No, go for it.
Um, I just wanted to kind of get a little clarity, like this is a new, so this wasn't included at all in the DKS scope of work before um. Because it kind of sounded like you were just moving it like in the order, like we would do it later. But now we're doing it sooner, is that not the, like, I don't know, just a little confused about that.
Right, yeah, let me, it might be good to back up and sort of talk through the kind of order of operations that I'm uh uh expecting to do with the uh Mount Adams Roundabout, so uh first off is this preliminary engineering. Uh, I'm gonna say how it was before and you can see where the ICE uh the uh intersection control evaluation was. So my plan was do this preliminary uh intersection uh about evaluation sufficient to create a proportionate share district, then we'd create a proportionate share district. Then uh we'd start uh seeing if we can acquire right away for the footprint of the roundabout um using credits towards the proportionate share district, so fingers crossed, not have to pay for any right away, but say, hey, you'll need to develop in the future, you'll need to pay this proportionate share in the future, so how about I negotiate, how about I give you the value of this land in proportionate share credits? So then we get uh the right away. Then uh kind of all at once do the intersection control evaluation and seek approval um from the Columbia Gorge Historic Highway Commission. And then, once we had essentially a funding source in the proportionate share district, we had right away acquired, we had an ICE and we had support from the historic Columbia Gorge Commission or a committee, historic highway committee. Um, basically, once we have all of those ducks in a row, bring it to ODOT and say, we wanna do a locally delivered project and we've already pre-knocked out all of their, all their no's, you know? So, just moving the ICE up above, but DKS was not gonna do all of that work. Um, yeah. That's just all of the work that I'm planning for the agency to um spearhead.
Hi, did you have a question? Kind of looked like you did.
You're reading my mind again. Um, I'm just curious if and I I know this is just about the the s- the scope, in increasing the scope for the um for the for DKS's contract, but um I'm wondering if this is gonna be a part of kind of the gateway into, is that gonna be like part of what this is gonna? It's gonna look beyond just just that intersection and kind of feed into the rest of the ways you're exiting the high eighty-four, how it's gonna like coming into our town. Is that gonna be part of like what they're working on as as this? Sorry, I kind of the conceptual intersection footprint? Um, kind of think about like the the gateway into Hood River and towards the
Yeah, uh, not at this stage. So this is very, very just, this is just traffic engineering, capacity analysis. Uh, you know, geometry. But when we start to uh solicit solicit support from the historic uh highway commission, yeah, we'll wanna uh talk about um ways that we're gonna connect to the historical past and um have it meld into the scenery and to the design aesthetic. And um to that uh, you know, to that effort, I'll be working really closely with the um uh TGM grant uh folks, whoever's selected for that, and making sure this integrates well with the full um Cascade Avenue corridor. Um, but we do already have a two thousand and twenty-one Cascade Avenue Design Refinement Plan. And so we already have a good concept of um uh of what the whole corridor is gonna look like. And, you know, transportation system plan and there's decades of work of thinking about interchange access management plan and all that. And in every one of those stages, a roundabout uh was either an alternative or the preferred alternative. So um, so yes, all that is to say, this is, we're not taking any left turn here. This is still very much in uh kind of the movement that has been uh the direction we've been going for many, many years. Um, but this is um purely mathematics. Um, we'll get to design and we'll do, I'm assuming, uh public process uh and get people involved as well when we start talking about the look and feel.
Will, how will the intersection control evaluation prioritize pedestrians and cyclist safety? At what point are we seeking input from community members or from some of our cycling smeeses within uh the county, for example, uh around this project?
Yeah, I'll follow up to see if there is any sort of public engagement component of the ICE. I'm thinking that it is um likely uh looking at pedestrian and bike uh the same and and vehicles, but looking all of them through models and and through like a a more scientific approach to kind of quantifying s- uh aspects of safety. So I'm I'm sure safety is a um uh included in in the evaluation of the various alternatives. There's no way safety isn't gonna be included. But I don't know if it includes um like a qualitative or subjective kind of uh interview component or not. I can follow up.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from council? No, there is a motion on page twelve, please.
I move that the Urban Renewal Advisory Committee recommend adding to an intersection control evaluation to the Mount Adams scope of work with DKS Associates.
I have a first from Anna.
Second.
Second from Ben, any additional discussions? Seeing none, if there are no additional items, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Uh, moving on to administrator updates, uh Will, please go ahead.
I'm just making notes of my follow-up that I've committed to, so I don't lose them. Okay. Um, so this next item uh is more informational, but um also for uh asking questions or also uh any input that you have into direction is appreciated. Um, but this is more just keeping you informed of um steps that we're taking and so that you're not surprised when materials go public. So uh the agency approved, uh middle has a construction incentive and it's been live um for people to apply to uh since January. We've let people know um uh but more or less informally, it's been somewhat of a soft launch uh and we're getting our our ducks in a row to do a major um marketing campaign for it. So uh there is a draft brochure um in the packet, and so I wanted to get input on the brochure but also just on our general marketing approach. So uh my intent is to take this brochure, which um gives information on the incentive, what's attractive about Hood River and also the middle housing standards that um that you need to use in order to um take advantage of the incentive, and I put that all together in a really digestible form and send that to uh every property owner on the west side uh that has vacant or uh develop or underdeveloped property. Every builder um who has pulled a uh construction building permit for housing in uh in the city for the last five years. And then also Cascadia Partners, which helped us um put together the brochure. They've given a list of middle housing developers in Portland, Spokane and Bend, um so I add some that uh to those folks as well. Um, so this brochure will point uh with a QR code to um to the application materials themselves. But it will also point to um a website where uh so I have some renderings in here, some architectural renderings showing um kind of what you can do with our middle housing standards uh versus conventional zoning, so kind of what regulatory benefits you get if you build small. And I have more architectural rendering renderings that didn't fit in the brochure, so I'll have all of the renderings that the um architect put together for us, and I'll also have all the details, kind of all the nitty gritty on their square footage and setbacks and parking and number of bedrooms and all that kind of stuff. Along with uh what would be the estimated development fee for each one of the lot configurations, and then what would be the estimated um uh middle housing construction incentive, so really make it user-friendly and understandable. And we'll also pair that with probably uh social media, at least a LinkedIn post, yeah. Um, so is the ideas and I so want to get feedback on ju- approach generally or or the brochure specifically.
Are there any questions or comments? Go ahead, Nina.
Thank you. Um, so I have a question about the the draft. I looked at the website. That looks really cool already. Um, and I have a couple of just ideas on the um on the pamphlet or the brochure part. Um, on the second page, there's a footnote one under incentive amount where it talks about rebate of all development fees and it says um all development fees administered by the City of Hood River is is including SDCs, and I just wanted, um, I was hoping for some clarification, is that all SDCs because the city administers the SDCs for some of our special districts? And I wondered if um this program is gonna impact the amount of uh SDCs that are gonna actually be uh paid to or collected for our special districts.
Yeah, thanks for that question. Um, so we do include all SDCs that we administer uh even if they're not our SDCs. Um, because um other entities' SDCs are a significant amount of the development fee burden. And what we're trying to do is equalize the development fee burden between big and small houses. And so if we did that kind of um being blind to some of the biggest um charges, we wouldn't really be equalizing the development burden. Um, but um all these SDCs, Parks District, um Construction Excise Tax for the School District and all of the city SDCs are all paid in full. And the rebate to the developer comes from urban renewal funding uh borrowed from uh we fifty percent from the Oregon Investment Board and fifty percent from the City of Hood River. We have a in total a million dollars to to borrow and pay these incentives. And then what pays back the borrowing is um tax increment generated uh by these homes, so very similar to um the Hampton Inn buying us that passing park or buying us that riparian area. Uh, these uh the tax increment uh generated from these homes is gonna pay back the borrowing that paid their rebate. And uh the city, the Parks District, the School District, all uh made whole and uh will uh they won't even know this program exists. We'll get paid their full amount at the normal times.
Thank you. Um, okay, and so then my second question is on the the third page um under incentive process number two, it says, agency will reserve incentive amount in programs available one million dollar funding. Are you talking about the Urban Renewal Agency? Cause it's just not um, it's not super clear, like who's doing that? Cause it says that um the city is doing this and then we have an urban renewal district. So if I'm a, if I'm a builder looking at this, I'm I'm asking, wait, who's the agency?
Yeah, thank you for that. I'll um I'll wordsmith that a bit. It it whenever I'm referring to agency, I'm talking about the uh Urban Renewal Agency. To some extent, we are um character limited uh in this format, but uh I appreciate, uh that's great. Uh, you know, after I read this fifteen times, it starts to look, you know, all the same to me, so getting fresh eyes um is great.
I have, thank you.
All right, Grant, go for it.
We we could give marketing feedback. Um, I'll just give you some offline feedback, cause we could be here for a long time giving marketing feedback. Uh, more more explicitly, that would be helpful for everyone here. Uh, what is the explicit end goal with this marketing? Is it to attract builders to actually come and build? Is it to inform? What is the actual goal?
Raise awareness so that people take advantage of the program. Um, you know, we have a million dollars and we wanna get that uh out the door as quickly as possible cause the sooner things get built, the sooner sooner they address our housing shortage and the sooner they start building tax increment.
So the end, the end goal, just to be clear, is to get builders to come here and build these types of housing units. Okay. Thanks. And every everything else regarding marketing feedback I can do offline. Thanks.
Well, speaking of marketing feedback, I think it's important to remember that it is one of our council goals to have uh an informed community, right? And that we don't technically have a stra- a strategy that's set up for how we're going to do that. What are the multimodal ways that we have to promote our material? So I heard you say that you're gonna sounds like this is gonna go out and email to folks, social media, maybe Paul does this on the radio with Mark Bailey. We have our lovely reporter that's here. Uh, so I think it would be important for us to have that discussion of what does that look like?
Just to clarify, I have a marketing background, majored in college, so I'm just talking about technical marketing practices that we don't have to rehash. It's
I hear you.
Technical background. It's not anything that's that is relevant that we necessarily need to discuss.
No, I hear that, and I think that that falls within the overall strategy that we have, that we set in our work goals, that we haven't formally made a clear plan of what that marketing looks like.
Yeah, it's not, it's not changing strategy. It's not adjusting anything is, yeah, I I understand what you mean.
Yes. Uh, great. Any other feedback?
Yeah, but press release, that's a good idea, that it wasn't on my on my radar. Yeah.
Anything else for Will?
If there's like any perfect things, we just email you and
Thank you. Much appreciated.
Um, I realize that I went into administrator update and that was a little earlier, so this is the time for the administrator update. Do you have anything for us, Will?
Yeah, just an update on the Heights jurisdictional transfer. Um, so um we are uh tied up uh in the House Bill uh twenty twenty-five, so um our understanding uh through our lobbyist is that um we uh, so the Jurisdictional Transfer Advisory Committee uh in the in House Bill twenty twenty-five is basically getting subsumed into um the Great Streets, uh and so there will be, they're getting renamed, the Great Streets uh Advisory Committee, they're getting different um membership, uh but they still evaluate jurisdictional transfer requests and understanding and then are funded. Uh, but they still evaluate jurisdictional transfer requests and understanding and then are funded um out of the Great Streets Fund, which could also fund other um improvements not associated with um jurisdictional transfer. But anyway, that's kind of how it's all been uh put together. Um, House Bill uh twenty twenty-five includes a hundred and twenty-five million for Great Streets uh for the great for a Great Streets Fund. Um, we are not specifically named as having an allocation of that, so it's not clear, but it certainly is enough money to fund uh our requ- our our recommended amount plus Tigers recommended amount and still have a good deal left over for general applications, so we're hopeful. And um kind of our lobbyists have told us that the best we're really going to get is maybe a budget note in ODOT's budget, uh we should be that jurisdictional transfer associated project should be um prioritized. Um, but as of right now, you know, we're kind of a small fish in a big pond, so um we only have so much uh ability to move the needle right now, so we have to kind of just be happy with hoping the Great Streets Fund is funded and then figuring out how we actually get at those dollars. Um, so uh that's where we're at. It all depends on the bill passing. Um, if you read the newspaper, you can see it's it's a real coin flip right now, and there's been quite a a bit of um drama here at the last uh little bit with members moving on and off of the Transportation uh uh Reinvestment uh Committee, so um no one knows, but uh but it's moving quickly and uh we'll get finality because everything has to be signee die. Um, the session has to close by June thirtieth.
Amanda?
Um, my answer, my first part of the question is like timeline, but um if it doesn't pass or I guess both ways, if it does pass and we are included and do we have like an any idea of what timeline of the figuring out looks like? And if it doesn't pass, do we know what happens next?
Yeah, so tha- that's a great um question that uh reminded me of a um kind of a key point of it too is uh so uh the bill includes multiple years of new taxes that increase over time. And so a lot of the funding doesn't come on immediately and uh and our understanding is that the Great Streets Fund may not be funded until future biennial. So that means we might be like two years out um from actually, even if we were successful in getting your H P's funding, we may not get it for two years. So one thing that I've reached out to our local ODOT contacts about is uh do you think that that get figured out through the intergovernmental agreement? Where um we know we're going to have local match requirements. Um, we know we have to spend uh twenty percent of the spending has to be local match. Could we just do twenty percent of our spend all at once at the beginning? Pay for a hundred percent essentially of um the projects in the first two years and then have Great Streets funding uh pick up thereafter, counting our current spend as match. Um, ODOT hasn't gotten back to me, uh I assume because that's not really a question they can answer, you know, so that's murky, but uh that'll be key. And I think it's in everyone's interest to get the authority transferred and to get projects done as quickly as possible, so I don't see any opposition to that. It's just I don't, I can't tell you how we get from A to A to Z uh right now.
And then if it doesn't passes, then what?
If it doesn't pass, ODOT has already offered, you know, they basically they're working out of existing appropriations and they're bound already by law to um replace the um the ADA sidewalks, uh curb ramps up in the hi- heights. So they've said, you know, whatever we uh intend to fix ourselves, they'll give us credit towards that and pay us out those curb ramps, but um that uh in sum comes nowhere close um to the uh kind of accumulated um disinvestment and 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 poor quality of the roadway. Um, so it will be, I think, a very difficult question that we may have to grapple with um is uh you know, how do we want to balance uh maybe taking on more liability and cost than is we should rightfully have to take on versus how quickly do we want to move forward projects? But um I'd say let's let's wait and see how the next two weeks go. Yeah.
Any other questions from Will? Great. Are there any items from any agency member? Okay, seeing none, I adjourned the Urban Renewal Agency Board Meeting at six thirty-nine and passed the gavel back to Mayor Blackburn.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, we next have a public hearing. I'm going to read the script. I call to order a public hearing relating to modification of building permit fees. Aquarium of the ca- a quorum of the council is present, and I will now ask all counselors to disclose any bias of or conflicts of interest and bias in this matter. Anybody? Hearing none. Would anyone in the audience like to question any counselor on any disclosure, bias, or conflict of interest, or otherwise challenge the participation of any member of council? Anybody online? Giving any indication, Jen? Great. In tonight's hearing, we will use the following order of presentation. First, we will hear from staff. Then we will hear from anyone wanting to speak on the matter. Is anyone in this room wishing to speak on this matter? We'll check again online after staff. So at this point, uh staff, report please.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this matter is comes to you as a part of your fiscal twenty-five, twenty-six budget. Uh, initially, it was seen uh by the Budget Committee as well as Council um earlier in the year in March. Uh, however, unlike most of your other fees, when you adjust building fees, either up or down or any modification, uh Oregon's administrative rules require that the Building Codes Division from the state of Oregon first approve that. Um, so after your initial hearing regarding the schedule of fees, staff produced uh the attached document in your packet and discussed the matter with the Building Codes Division. Building Codes Division then published that notice of change uh which requires us to follow up uh with our own subsequent public hearing. You are here tonight to to consider the resolution. Um, as as included in the packet, um there are some adjustments um to the fees and a a number of new fees, including a tech fee, uh temporary certificate of occupancy fee, which is uh considered and required or intended to offset some of the administrative oversight and burden uh a staff to having to take on a couple more steps in the process. There is a general adjustment uh across the board that is consistent with both Hood River County as well as Wasco County, which is one of the determining matters that uh that the state looks at is how do our how does our fee structure look as compared to our neighboring municipalities? Uh, and within your um within your packet, you have a motion to approve the document uh as presented. We're here for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Dustin. Uh, let's let's go ahead and ask clarifying questions, and then I'll hear from the public. Any questions or comments for Dustin, y'all?
Gladys.
Thank you. So Dustin, can you help us understand how the information about the fee changes? How is that being made available in both English and in Spanish? Uh, how are we potentially collaborating with our community partners to share this information uh ahead of the public hearing?
So a matter goes before, uh it's required to go to the Building Codes Division. That's our mandatory notice. To my knowledge, they do not publish anything in English or excuse me, in Spanish. Um, the form is already set and we're required to follow suit. Uh, it does make its way to the paper uh three times, I believe, which uh can be uh required in Spanish. We also have, we'll put it on our website, which has Spanish translation as well.
So once this has been finalized, that is where folks will find the latest and most updated information is through our website.
That's correct. Uh, that's typically how we put out most of the Building Department uh materials uh last year, and this kind of reflects one of the tech changes. Um, the state mandated that we allow um and set up for e-permitting. Um, so we have some some adjustments that uh that have come from the state level. That has really more than language barrier. I think that's that tech barrier is is kind of in some ways universal. Um, that is something that I think we've been focused on the te- trying to accommodate technology and having permits come through exclusively uh electronically, which to us is is good. It's handy. However, to some of our customers, um it it presents a new challenge. So that's really what we've been working with with the community.
Great, thank you.
Right. Um, this may sound like an odd question. Um, earlier on, I sent I asked um the question of regarding methodology, writing square footage and the rates charged therein. Um, for example, evaluations under structural permit fees uh decrease proportionally based on um how high the valuations go. And so the 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 amount charged per dollar decreases the higher um the valuation is. And I asked why that was. Um, and generally that follows or the the response I got was, well, that's that is the methodology we generally had, and that's the general the methodology that our neighbors have. And the state doesn't necessarily prescribe that, but they like to see consistency with our neighbors and across the state. Um, the I didn't necessarily hear that that's a methodology we have to follow, but just because our our neighbors are all doing something, does that necessarily mean it's a good idea?
Well, I I would definitely not agree that just because neighbors are doing it. Sorry, Mayor. Uh, you ready for my response?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Um, I think the the more important than that is um the state's methodology requires us to really uh consider the amount of effort that goes into the permit and the administrative oversight, so the fee increases don't follow a linear path, um and that really reflects some of the the amount of work and that the resources needed. Uh, for example, uh a five hundred thousand dollar house is not necessarily half the effort of a million dollar house review. And so the fees are are intentionally uh reflect that, so as you the the curve would be a a logarithmic curve, not a linear curve. It's not a straight line equation that for every dollar that uh is invested in a project, it becomes that much more difficult to review. Um, there is an increase and that's reflected in the numbers, but it's not a straight line number, and and that really follows the intended methodology of the state. So as as building fees go up, there's not a one-to-one correlation of the amount of resources that we have to spend to to make those reviews, and and that's built in to the administrative rules. They don't tell you exactly how you get there, but this is generally, even across the state, this is generally how they they support it. So another feature that comes along with this is, you know, you you have programs and incentives to build smaller, more efficient housing. Uh, this effort from Building Codes Division and the finance and fees is really agnostic to that, so uh incentivizing smaller, more cost-effective housing often comes with outside programs, not necessarily in the building fee as as the building fee schedule.
Thanks for clarifying.
At this point, I'll ask for public input. Any comments on the staff presentation? Anyone online or in the room? Uh, anything else first from the council before I close the hearing and we deliberate? All right, I'll close the public hearing and deliberation, uh and then ultimately a motion. Who would? Does anyone have anything to say or?
I move that the City Council adopt Resolution twenty twenty-five dash seventeen, adopting the building schedule of fees, rates and charges for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six.
Moved by Rivera.
Second.
Second by Gekki. Uh, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Chair votes, I motion passes. Thank you. We'll move on to the consent agenda. I see that we have OLCC, so I'll pull that off. I would entertain a motion to approve items one, three and four.
So moved.
Moved by Olson.
Second.
Second by Mitchell. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes, I motion passes. I would entertain a motion to approve item number two, PJ's Hometown Cafe liquor license.
Also move.
Moved by Cavallari? Second by Mitchell. Discussion.
I will abstain from OLCC permit applications. This is not a reflection of these establishments, businesses or their owners, rather that I object to the fact that we do not have enough transportation options for people who visit these establishments. As a result, they may end up getting behind the wheel and putting themselves and others at risk. I'd like to highlight the broader public health responsibility that we hold. We recently adopted a code allowing transportation networks, and that is a step forward. But access remains limited, especially during late hours and in the upper valley. If we and our countywide partners are able to provide adequate transportation during late evenings and weekends, I will start approving OLCC applications.
Thank you, Gladys. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention?
Aye.
Rivera abstains. Chair votes, I motion passes. Action items, Chris.
Great. Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, so the uh first action item in front of you is uh Resolutions twenty twenty-five fifteen and twenty twenty-five sixteen. These are authorizing interfund loans. Um, the uh the fiscal twenty-five budget included a million nine of interfund loans to the utility funds, uh which are required for uh planned capital projects. Um, these resolutions, before you provide for interfund loans from the Fleet and Large Equipment Fund, the amount of six hundred thousand dollars to the Water Fund for the inline hydro bridge financing, and additional million dollars also to the Water Fund for general project funding. Uh, the inline hydro generation, hydroelectric generation project has a total project budget of about a million nine. Um, it does require bridge financing for development until such time as a project is placed in service uh which and when it becomes eligible for the various grants and tax credits uh which will contribute to its funding. Um, through the end of this fiscal year, the project is anticipated to spend approximately six hundred thousand dollars, and the interfund loan is intended to provide for that bridge financing. Uh, additionally, the Montello Avenue water pipe replacement um and the uh the pressure relief valve or PRV replacements at Twentieth Street and the Rand and Cascade uh intersection were critical infrastructure projects which were completed with a collective project cost of approximately a million dollars during this fiscal year. Um, fund balances in the Water Fund were insufficient to complete these projects uh and maintain adequate operating reserves. Um, these proposed interfund loans to the Water Fund with a combined principal balance of a million six will finance these projects through the completion of work required during this fiscal year. Uh, these loans are advanced from the Fleet and Large Equipment Fund. Interfund loans lending or interfund lending benefits the city as it's more administratively efficient and cost-effective than either short-term borrowing or public borrowings. Uh, the interfund lending is also a valuable alternative when sufficient legal available balances exist in these funds. Um, uh after the advance of the interfund loans, the Fleet and Large Equipment Fund is expected to have significant remaining balances that will service uh all budgeted items for the upcoming fiscal year. Each of these loans advanced will have a five-year maturity with a five-year amortization and charge interest at the Oregon Short Term Funds rate, which is currently four point six percent. Uh, the repayment schedules for each of the loans are also as outlined uh on the resolutions.
Thank you, Chris. Questions or comments, y'all?
Grant. I understand the terms of these. That's fine.
Yep.
Uh, question is bigger. Uh, how do we have or how much additional capacity do we have available for any additional interfund loans to ourselves or any additional capital needs we may have in the future? I don't necessarily need that answer now because I imagine you don't have that math off the top of your head.
Yeah.
But that is a uh bigger question that you might want to do some math on.
Yeah, no, so I actually, um, the larger answer is is that we are currently in capital uh planning. Um, so these are intended as bridge financings, right? So this is not sort of permanent uh project financing. Uh, and certainly, um, we are looking beyond the individual capacities of fund balances uh for ongoing projects. Um, so Haley uh and I have been working, um, you know, on a longer term sort of five to seven year plan. Uh, and and at some point, we'll be coming to council with a larger financing pocket package that would be outside of financing. Um, you know, probably in to the tune of uh, you know, sort of five million dollars a year. Um, you know, sort of that would be serviced by uh water and sewer revenues, right, or utility revenues. Um, so the prod, the the math in that is understanding that service coverage ratio that can be supported um by utility rates uh and the overall sort of project needs and then financing availability. Um, so yeah, I mean, this is this is not going to be a permanent solution.
So, yeah, I mean, this is, this is not going to be a permanent solution. This is really an earned bridge.
And would that long term, more long term plan that you mentioned incorporate any interfund transfers or moving around funds from one bucket to another in order to bridge financing or address some of these needs that you're discussing?
Potentially.
Okay.
Yeah, potentially.
It would, I imagine it would be helpful to have those mapped out so we understand.
Yeah.
How the money is.
I think it'll it will more be a function of measuring internal availability with external sort of weights and terms. We have been intentionally keeping these interfund loans short in duration. So while the interest rates are low, the repayment terms are pretty high because the principal payments are high. So it'll be a function of need, debt service coverage, and then sort of benefit to the city.
Seeing none, this is an action item.
I move to adopt resolution number twenty twenty five dash fifteen and resolution twenty twenty five dash sixteen, authorizing the interfund loans from the fleet and equipment fund to the water fund in fiscal year twenty twenty four dash twenty five.
Moved by Paulson.
Second.
Second by Cavallari. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, chair votes, I motion passes, supplemental budget, Chris.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So earlier, earlier in this year, council passed the the third quarter supplemental budget for the current fiscal year. As a sort of refresher, that the the budget must be balanced in any fiscal year. And then as there are changes in revenues, expenses or operations, the we regularly require sort of appropriation adjustments. And so what's in front of you is the final Q four supplemental budget resolution twenty twenty five eighteen, which makes certain adjustments to the city's adopted budget for this current fiscal year. So going through the final changes that that we are requesting in the general fund, in the there are unanticipated departmental expenditures in an amount of about a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars specifically relating to engineering approvals for Mariposa Village. So Mariposa Village required extension extensive third party engineering resources for its review and completion. Additionally, as you're all aware, there was no engineering staff for the current fiscal year. So third party providers are effective, but also more costly substitute. With the engineering position staffs for the coming fiscal year and no additional Mariposa Village projects planned, this expense is not deemed to be reoccurring. I should also note that while we have allocated contingency to cover this change, excuse me, the Mariposa Village permit process did generate additional revenue for the development for the department. Nonetheless, contingency was utilized for this key for adjustment, just for sort of cleanliness and clarity. The second change is the Internal Services Fund. We are proposing an increase, the administrative legal expense of seventy five thousand dollars. Administrative legal expenses exceeded the budget during the current fiscal year because of the larger legal undertakings that have been both settled and pending. In particular, labor attorney costs and then the continuing Panabaker lawsuit, particularly because this was a federal sort of court process, which required specialized counsel at at significant expense than than would normally be undertaken. Again, as in above, contingency is adjusted downward to account for this increase in the administrative legal expenses. The next change is more of a positive change. So in our reserve funds, in the Affordable Housing Reserve, we are making adjustments for anticipated SB fifteen thirty receipts related to Mariposa Village. As you are aware, Senate Bill fifteen thirty enacted during the twenty twenty four Oregon Legislative Assembly appropriated two point four million dollars to the City of River, the Mariposa Village development. These budget adjustments adjust accounts for the current and anticipated draws of these funds during the fiscal year. So each of these changes is both the receipt of the SB fifteen thirty funds and then the pass through to the project in funding that development. The last is just an administrative adjustment in the fiduciary fund. This is a complete pass through of receipts collected on behalf of the city of Mosher. Water revenue receipts are adjusted upward to account for greater than anticipated revenue collections. And then similarly, the revenue remittance is also adjusted to allow for the passing of those funds to Mosher. Taking questions on these adjustments.
Thanks, Chris, for keeping everything tied up and tidy. I'd entertain a motion.
I move that the city council approve resolution twenty twenty five dash eighteen to make appropriations and adjust the adopted budget for fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty five.
Moved by Rivera.
Second.
Second by Gekki. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, chair votes, I motion passes, thanks.
Great, thank you very much.
More development code.
Thank you, Mayor and councilors. For tonight's work session, we're joined by Matt Hasty and Kerry Brennicky of the consulting firm MIG, who performed the code audit and are putting together the code update. In January, Matt provided you with an update on the project. And at that time, you reviewed the initial findings of the code audit, which was our first phase of the project. And we discussed updates to the community engagement plan. We're now solidly in phase two of the project, the code update, beginning on page forty of your packet tonight. There's a cover sheet that provides some background and three documents provided by this, the consulting team. Tonight, Matt and Kerry are going to review the project goals, the phase two tasks and timeline. Will provide a brief recap of the initial recommendations that came out of the code audit. Discuss public engagement, describe the approach to structuring the development code. Review and discuss what we're referring to as module one, the first of four batches of code material that will be drafted. We'll take comments and questions, including for several specific issues that are highlighted in your packet for module one, begin on on page forty nine. They're framed in blue boxes in your packet. And then we'll discuss next steps. Those next steps will include include three additional work sessions with the council and the planning commission. And the amount of material that we'll cover is really going to ramp up after tonight. As a reminder, this is not a public hearing, hearings to review the proposed development code update are expected to begin and begin in the spring of twenty twenty six. Interested parties are welcome to provide feedback through our project webpage, as well as at the planning commission meetings or briefings. And we expect to be again scheduling some small group and one on one meetings shortly. Dustin, is there anything you want to add before we get started?
No, just, again, advertisement for the project webpages that are up. It provides basically unlimited opportunity and touch points for people to submit comments and writing. We encourage you to do so.
And with that, I think we can turn it over to Matt. Thanks, Matt.
All right, thanks, Kevin. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Awesome, okay. I am going to share my screen, so give me a moment to do that. All right, so everybody seeing that okay?
Yes, we see it.
Perfect, okay, excellent. So Kevin gave you a great summary of kind of what I'll be talking about this evening. And I'll do most of the talking initially. Carrie will, Carrie's really doing a lot of the work on the project. She'll jump in if I miss anything or get anything wrong. And then she'll help respond to questions when we get into some discussion with y'all. But I'll just kind of jump right into it. A little bit of just recap from the presentation we gave you back in January, just to kind of remind you of the goals of the project. Really, first and foremost is to modernize your code, make it easier to use and to understand and administer administer for all parties, for applicants, for your staff, for yourselves and the planning commission. Also really important to ensure that housing standards, standards that apply to residential development are clear and objective. That's a state requirement and also a really good idea. So and this project is being funded in part by the state of Oregon through a grant from them, and that's one of their primary objectives. And also to make sure that we're addressing both local and statewide housing needs and regulations. That's another objective, pretty important to the state. And then just ensuring throughout the process that we have an equitable and an inclusive process and that we're thinking about equity in terms of how the updates to the code impact people. So those are important things for us to be thinking about throughout. There's a lot going on on this graphic, I will admit. I'll just kind of note a few things to sort of take away from it. One is that, as Kevin said, we've prepared the first of four kind of batches of code amendments. We're calling them modules for lack of a better term. And in each case, we prepare a set of draft amendments and partly just to make it, make them more manageable, or I don't want to say bite sized because we pretty big bite, but more manageable chunks of code to review. And so we review them with staff, your staff, Kevin and Dustin have had a fair number of comments on this first batch, and then we talked to the planning commission. We got some guidance and some comments from them. Now we're talking to you, so we'll do this with each of these four chunks of code. And then after each sort of round of review, we'll prepare an updated draft. And then after we've gone through that process for all four of those modules, we'll then combine everything, kind of reconcile any any differences, make sure everything's fitting together and syncing up before we prepare a consolidated set of draft code amendments. So that's kind of the process in terms of updating the code along the way. We'll be doing a number of things that I'll talk about in a moment to gather, give other folks in the community an opportunity to kind of chime in and just learn more about the process and hopefully, you know, understand what we're doing. It's a pretty wonky subject, development code updates, but we'll be working on that throughout the process. And then also just kind of a few other things we'll be doing, preparing some graphics or illustrations to to help people more easily understand some of the key code standards or provisions. We'll be doing a diversity, equity and inclusion analysis of this process and of the the amendments to the code. So that'll happen kind of once we get through that initial consolidated code update process. And then ultimately, of course, going through an adoption process with the planning commission and all of you. And as Kevin said, you know, we're expecting to get to that point in the process and kind of late spring and summer of of next year. So that's the process we're going through. I will talk a little bit about just again, as a refresher, some of the recommendations that came out of that earlier process, the code audit process. And I think first and foremost, this will be a pretty significant update to your code. There are a lot of, there will be a fair bit of kind of reorganization and restructuring. But a lot of your standards and a lot of your provisions will remain intact or will have kind of minor changes to them. But we will be reorganizing some sections, likely replacing some sections, creating some new sections. And then just kind of addressing a lot of, I guess, more minor issues throughout the code, you know, how you define terms in the code, how you illustrate some of those definitions, et cetera. So and then again, that making things clear and objective is will necessitate quite a few changes in the code as well. So at both a high level and kind of a smaller level, there will be quite a few changes to the code. Just a little bit on some of the things we're doing around community engagement. So Kevin and Dustin both talked about the project website. That'll be kind of a place for people to go to leave us comments, to look at documents we've been preparing, to add their names to an interested parties list and just sort of generally keep themselves up to date on the project, also to see links to periodic survey questions. Talk more about that in a minute. And also to see some short explanatory videos that we'll be preparing. So the project webpage is a pretty important spot for people to kind of look to, to learn more about this process. As Kevin said, we'll also be conducting some meetings with small groups or interested parties, including Spanish speaking community members, similar to what we did in the code audit phase. We haven't laid out the exact timing for that. That will happen sometime during this current phase of updating each of the modules or or going through the module updates. So we'll be kind of back to you with more information about when we have those scheduled and who we're meeting with. But some of the folks are likely to be some of the same folks we met with the first time around, people who use the code. I mean, everybody's affected by it, but particularly people who use it on a more regular basis as well. And then using social media communications to let people know what we're doing also. And to let people know about these other couple of things on here. So we don't plan on doing like large surveys, but we do plan on doing kind of, think of them almost as like pop up mini surveys where we ask a couple of questions related to topics in each of these modules. So we do anticipate doing that at a number of points during the process to get people's feedback on specific things. And then also producing a couple of videos. And the first one of those is in process right now, and it's really aimed at kind of just at, you know, helping people understand what is a development code and why is it important to me, how might it impact me, what are we doing, what are some examples of things we'll be addressing as part of this process? But it'll be pretty short, pretty brief, trying not to lose people's attention or keep their attention for a brief period of time when we do that. So those are some of the things we're doing as part of this process, as well as just translating materials from English to Spanish for folks. So just a little bit on work completed to date. We prepared a community engagement plan. You actually saw an early version of that prior to getting started on phase two. So we we updated that based on the conversations we'd had with all of you. And then also just kind of fleshed out some of the details in there about the timing of certain activities. One of the things you got in your packet was a description of how we're structuring these different code update modules, and I'll talk about that more in a moment. So we produced that, and that's kind of part of this code module one, which I'll talk about more in a moment as well. Updated the project webpage to let people know we're starting this this next phase, this code update phase. And, you know, here's how you can learn more about this, gave people opportunity to ask or giving people opportunities to ask questions and get their name on a on a list. And then we are already kind of starting on code module two. So we're, it's kind of a, some overlap between when we're working on one module and when we start on the next one, just to kind of keep us moving forward and and hitting our overall schedule. And then, as I said, that first explanatory video is also underway. So the way we're proposing to structure these four modules and really the way we're proposing to structure your updated development code, this kind of lays that out. And this follows the model code for small cities that was developed a fair number of years ago through the state's transportation and growth management program, the TGM program. That's a program that's co administered by the departments of land conservation and development and the Oregon Department of Transportation. And so that model code was developed, I think, the first iteration of it. It's been up close to twenty years, maybe a little more. And it's been used pretty widely throughout the state by smaller communities as both a structure and also a model or a template for some of the specific requirements in their codes. And so it's pretty familiar to folks who develop property or build things, you know, throughout the state. And it's gone through a couple of rounds of updating over the years, and it's actually getting updated again right now. Actually, our firm is helping with that update. I'm not the one managing that process, but other folks in our firm are. So it's it's kind of a nice opportunity for us to keep abreast of the things that are being updated and pull that kind of most current best practices into this process as well. So that's kind of our starting point and the four modules and the four main sections of the code. First introduction and general provisions, and that's what we'll be focused on tonight with a little more presentation and some discussion of specific questions with y'all. The next module, so the next one we'll come to you with will be related to application procedures and procedures for land divisions. Right now, one of your titles is your subdivision title, and we'll be pulling information about procedures for land divisions into this new section of code and standards for subdivisions into actually what's shown as module four here, community design and land division standards. And then module three will be kind of the discussion of the regulations specific to individual zoning designations as well as specialty standards, so design and or development standards, use standards related to those. And then for community design and and land division standards. So I'm going to keep going. Do feel free to ask me questions as I go along, and I'll also take a pause in about two more slides and see if you have any questions then, and then we'll ask you some questions as well. So the module one elements, and I'll say a little bit more about these as I kind of walk through them, just to give you a flavor for this. And again, this is kind of the focus of a couple of the documents that we sent you all. So purpose and authority, you know, that's really, there's a number of things covered there. What's the purpose of the code? What laws provide the city with authority to manage development and land use in Hood River? And what's the city trying to achieve with the code? There's also guidance in this section on how the code is structured and should be interpreted, how language is used and interpreted in the code, what other state and local rules apply, and what things must the code be consistent with? Your comprehensive plan being a pretty important one there in relationship to both your zoning map, but also to your building code and your building permitting standards and processes. And then just some general provisions related to how you issue decisions. So those are the things under that purpose and authority. Definitions really needs to include definitions for all technical terms used in the code. We have started working on this to make sure that we come up with something that's complete, that's consolidated, that does not include duplicative items, and where the definitions, particularly as they pertain to residential use are clear and objective. And that's consistent with state rules as well. So that's going to be a work in progress, I'm going to say, throughout this process, because we're going to need to kind of look at changes to those as we work on these other code modules. So we've started work on this, but we're going to kind of hold off on any kind of detailed review until we get a little further along in the process. A lot of record determinations, you know, that's essentially defining the criteria for what determines illegally created or established a lot. And that's important when you're thinking about one of these other items, which is nonconforming situations. So it establishes criteria and procedures for making those determinations. And then code interpretation, there are times when there are as clear and objective as we want to make your code. There are times when people can interpret the code in a couple of different ways or more than one way. And so at that point, somebody needs to issue an interpretation. That's typically the planning director, but sometimes it's you all that gets referred to you. So there will be updated procedures around that process or those types of processes. And then enforcement, so code enforcement, that's sort of the process for how do you categorize different levels of of non compliance with the code? And then what are the penalties for code violations? Right now, this mostly refers to title one of your meanest code. And so we'll need to sort of think about, you want to include any additional information in the development code around this issue? So that's going to be a discussion question for y'all. And then nonconforming situations, I'll just say, I've got one more slide on that one because it's kind of a complicated matter. So we say nonconforming situations because there's different ways to think about this. It's basically, we're talking about the things that are on the ground now that were developed at some point in the past are not consistent with your current code standards. And there's different ways they can be not consistent. So a nonconforming use, you know, we're talking about this use was legally established at the time it started, but it's no longer allowed in a given zone. So you can think about like a barber shop in a residential zone or a warehouse in a residential zone. They wouldn't be allowed now, but they're there now. And so we need to sort of know how to deal with those. All of these, we need to sort of know how to deal with potential expansion or replacement of these types of uses. So that's nonconforming use. Nonconforming development is something where the form of the structure or the development is not consistent with your current standard. So could be it doesn't meet the setback requirements. It's closer to the property line. It could be taller than what your current maximum height limits are, could cover more area than you allow to cover on a given lot, things like that. And then the last one is a nonconforming lot, and that's essentially a lot that doesn't meet your current dimensional requirement. So minimum lot size or minimum width or depth of lot. So those things are important in thinking about, again, how you allow things to continue or be expanded or replaced. And we've got several specific discussion questions for you about that this evening. So I just wanted to talk about those a little bit more. So I'm going to take a pause. There was a lot of talking, appreciate your patience. And just see, I guess, first I'll see if Carrie or Dustin or Kevin have anything to add, and then just see if y'all have any questions, and then we'll start peppering you with some questions.
Mayor, nothing to add from me. Dustin?
Nothing yet.
I don't have anything, Matt.
All right. Awesome.
We're okay.
Y'all, do you have any?
We're okay up on the long table so far.
Okay, great. All right, well, then I will start asking you questions. So we've got six questions here. These are all questions that you'll find in the blue boxes in one of the memos that we sent you all. These kind of start, the first one is on page fifty three to fifty four of your packet, and they kind of go through, I think the last one is on about page sixty three to sixty five. So I'll kind of mention where these are in your packet as I go through them. But these are discussion questions we incorporated in there, and we asked the planning commission some of these same questions. So we kind of state the question, talk a little bit about kind of how your code treats these things now. And then let you know what we heard from the planning commission, and then we want to, excuse me, hear from you on the same questions to see if you have any thoughts, recommendations. Again, as Kevin and Dustin said, this is not a hearing, you know, but we are looking for whatever guidance you want to provide tonight or just comments to help us sort of think through this stuff as we move forward. So that's what we'll do for the next few slides. So the first one, we talked about, and this is again on page fifty three to fifty four of the packet. We talked about one option to include in your code as a zoning checklist. This is not something you have now. You do kind of have a checklist process, but it's not formalized anywhere in your in your development code. It basically is a way to give an applicant a list of the things that they're going to have to think about and be consistent with as part of a project. So it kind of gives them a list ahead of time. And it's particularly, I think, can be useful for a project that doesn't go through like a land use hearing process. It's going to go, it's a type one process, which means it's an administrative review process, and it maybe just goes straight to building permit. But the project still has to be consistent with your planning standards, your land use standards. So this is a way to give people kind of a sense of what are the things they need to be thinking about before they finish designing a project? And then they find out they've designed the project, and they're not consistent with things, and they've got to go back and redo stuff. So that's the kind of idea behind this. So in terms of the planning commission comments, we talked through this with them. You know, one of the things they asked about was, is this going to make that process, the application process more onerous? We said, that's not the intent. I mean, it will potentially require them to review the checklist and indicate whether or not they think they're meeting these requirements, but it's really intended to ultimately reduce work. And so they were generally supportive, the planning commission was, of use of a checklist. So I'm just going to pause after each one of these questions, and we'll just walk and see what comments y'all have, questions, suggestions, and then we'll just take them one at a time like that.
I'm sort of trying to imagine being in this situation and having a project. And I seems like a checklist could work well. I don't know what other cities do, and planning commission says checklist. I'm anybody, anybody got beef with the checklist? No beef at the long table.
All right, excellent. All right.
Hold on, Matt, we have a question. Go ahead, Amanda.
And maybe you'll cover this later, but is this included in the checklist or something similar? Is there like a step, like an order of steps somewhere? Because like if I, this was me, I know nothing about this, and I would really appreciate like, this is what you do first, and this is what you do second. Is that part of a checklist or is that a different thing?
I'm going to say, I'm actually looking at Carrie because she's nodding her head up and down. I'll let her take this one. I'd give you my thoughts too, but let's see what she has to say.
Well, how we checklist, I've seen in other jurisdiction is they're part of a application for a certain type of building. Say you want to put a duplex in a zone, it's going to have what you need for your application, all the pieces, and then it's going to kind of have all the requirements of what you need to look at and what you're going to be required to submit, including need to measure setbacks in height or for certain building materials. So there'll be lots of different checklists depending on what you're building. And it'll be up to Hood River to develop these to make it as clear to Dustin and Kevin as they can. Because right now, they do go through a checklist when they get building permits in. But this will kind of front load the requirements for applicants when they get now. It's going to be a type one, sort of a land use review prior to the building permit. Dustin, you have anything, Dad?
Yeah, I think it's important, as we've seen some shifts at the state level on the, call it the complexity of projects and the number of items that you and cities like Hood River will have to allow without land use decisions, certain land divisions, certain housing types that previously went through a series of approvals before they landed that permit. I think this is an important step to make sure that we don't get too far into design without some some checkpoint. So although it's an extra step, the way we we looked at it was it's easier to complete a checklist than it is to redesign your development because you didn't understand the code. So we always encourage people to know the code before they before they submit and get into architecture drawings and site development. Not always the case. So we, I think it's a, it's a necessary measure to make sure that we we do move things along. It's not intended to be a barrier. It's intended to really serve the the more complicated aspects of the development process so that we we hit those those things and get them get them a little smoother. Into forecast, it's it's an advertisement to the people who are going to invest a lot of money in architects and builders and people who may not have done the project before. I mentioned in planning commission, we have, you know, the large professional firms and larger developers. Oftentimes, this is, you know, they're equipped with lawyers, they're equipped with engineers, architects, staffers that know how to do these things. Oftentimes, with our smaller applicants, this may be the first time they're doing some of these projects, and they can be frustrated by hitting all the blind spots that they don't see coming. And so I think it also will serve some of that that group that that may not be as readily equipped to navigate a process. The more illumination we can give of what's ahead, I think the better.
Yeah, and I think it could easily, as Carrie said, and I think you asked about, include what are the steps somebody's got to go through? Not just what are the specific requirements they need to be aware of, but what are the steps they're going to go through as part of the process? And as Carrie said, you know, what are the types of, what's, what are the types of information they're going to have to have available and have to submit as they go through? So.
Does this kind of take the place of a pre application conference?
I think it can to a degree. It doesn't completely, but it certainly can help and take the place a little bit. I mean, often in a pre application process, application conference, the planner that's running that provides the applicant with kind of this list of here are all the different sections of the code that you are going to need to pay attention to and be consistent with. They will sometimes then gave, go even a little deeper and say, and here are the types of standards, or here are some of the specific standards you're going to need to pay attention to. And in with a lot of types of applications, especially if they're small, smaller scale or if they're more administrative, they go straight to building permit, you wouldn't require a pre application conference. So somebody wouldn't necessarily go through that step. So this would, it's not totally a substitute, but I think it could serve some of the same purpose. That's, that's what I would say. What do you think, Dustin?
Yeah, I think I think it serves a similar purpose as trying to highlight what's ahead for smaller projects. Typically, our pre apps are are more ambitious and complicated, and we have, we're trying to bring in not only planning and zoning folks, but engineering, building, utilities, our other outside agencies that are impacted. They're definitely suited to a more ambitious project. This this should serve our smaller direct to permit the projects in a similar way, but but on a lighter version.
Thanks. Ready to go on to question number two? Yes, from the long table.
All right, excellent. So the next few questions I'll note have to do with nonconforming situations. So with each one of these, again, I'll kind of talk about the, I'll state the question, and I'll talk a little bit about what you do now. I'll, and then I'll weave in some of the conversation we had with the planning commission and let you know what they had to say. So this one has to do with allowing for expansion of a nonconforming use. So right now, your code in general does not allow expansion of a nonconforming use. However, there are some exceptions to that within your code and including for certain types of residential uses. So so there are, there is that. And we want to kind of find out, do you, do you, you know, do you want to allow some expansion of a nonconforming use, particularly if it becomes more nonconforming? Is that okay? Or should you not allow something to be more nonconforming? And Dustin gave a really good example of a situation where that might occur when we talked to the planning commission, and that was you've got, you've got a house, and it is nonconforming in that in that it goes partly into the setback area. And if you were to make that house taller, you would have more of the house vertically in the setback area, and that would be a thing that you wouldn't currently allow because it would make, it would make it more nonconforming. Now, if you allowed the house to be taller, but not within that setback area, then that would be okay because you're not making it more nonconforming as long as you're not exceeding the height requirement. So that's kind of a an example of that, and there's probably plenty of other ones we could provide. When we talked to the planning commission about this, they generally support some flexibility and variability within these provisions based on the size, the scope, the type of change. They supported the the some exceptions for residential uses. So they didn't say absolutely not, but they liked the idea of some exceptions and some flexibility based on the scope of the design. So or the scope of the the change. I think I got that right, but Carrie, Dustin, anything to add there? It's okay to correct me too if I went off track.
Do we want to start with just the nonconforming uses before the structures?
Oh, yes, sorry. I was making apples and oranges there. Thank you. Yeah, sorry about that. This was allowing expansion of nonconforming uses, so at all, you know. So if it's a, the use that's not allowed in the zone, do you let it get any bigger? And again.
Barber shop example, Matt.
Barber shop example. You let a barber shop get more nonconforming when it's already not supposed to be allowed in that zone? Yeah, thank you. That's the problem with these nonconforming.
This is a less clear question to me than the checklist question. Anybody want to chime in on this? Greg?
More reflective or question for the rest of council? Or if if, or perhaps a question for staff? If something is a nonconforming use, why would we want to make it more of a nonconforming use?
Yeah, that was kind of going to be like one of my questions to staff slash IMG here. I'm was kind of surprised by that one that, you know, why does the model code allow for more permissive, you know, expansion of nonconforming use? And also, I just wanted to make clear, like, when we're talking about an expansion of a nonconforming use, like in the example that was given, it's like, that's the expansion of the building, but it's not an expansion of the nonconforming element of that. Some were talking about expansion of, you know, a nonconforming use. Like, are we talking about, it's okay if the building expands so long as the nonconforming element of it doesn't expand? Are we talking about like, yeah, the whole thing, even if we're expanding into creating essentially more a more nonconforming footprint of that building, if you will? I don't know if that made any sense at all what I was just saying, but you know.
Kevin, do you want to chime in on that?
I would say another scenario, like you've got an existing commercial building that's got floor space devoted to a variety of tenants, and maybe we're talking about expanding a tenant. And maybe we're talking about expanding a tenant in existing floor area, uh increasing the nonconformity that way. The good planning commission was open to the idea of, well, maybe that barber shop is. Serving the neighborhood pretty effectively and in order for them to remain competitive, um it would be helpful if they could. Uh grow their floor area by 10%. You know, they asked about sideboards, were there ways to um open things up, create a little more flexibility? But still, uh you know, retain some limitations. And again, there was there was some willingness to explore this.
I'm kind of leery, like I'm not seeing some important part of this, but. Grant and Ben, I kind of agree, like, why would we want to like, okay, the barber shop's there, we don't want to like. Eliminate it, but I don't think I'm in favor of allowing it to have more quantity of the nonconformity. Grant?
A- as a follow up regarding uh. Staff, Kevin, saying that other people see value in a barber shop, for example, and wanting to see that business thrive in a nonconforming space. Why would we then not just consider making that a conforming use?
Might turn that one back over to Matt. I think that again, if if the example is this commercial activity that's been occurring in a residential neighborhood or residential zoning district. And the idea was uh to reduce conflicts between residential and commercial uses by excluding commercial uses. But it it was there prior to zoning um to uh allow that to. Right now, continue but not expand. And and the commission was once again uh thinking, well, maybe there is some benefit to allowing a small expansion to keep that business. Not only operating but competitive, you know, if if circumstances came up that uh. What I think, Matt, we also talk about procedurally this being a conditional use permit, a request that would go back to the planning commission for their review.
Yeah, we we did. We. At um couple of things, one, just to reiterate what Kevin said is that. I think the planning commission said, maybe this would be okay within some with some sideboard, so not more than a certain percent. That's sort of how the model code treats this. It allows a little bit of flexibility, but not a lot. Um and as Kevin said, the other comment was um that this shouldn't be allowed outright. It should need to go through a conditional use process so that you could put some conditions on it. It's not just a kind of an outright allowed thing. Um and I think in terms of the question about, you know, the remedy could be to make it a conforming use or to make it an allowed use. I mean, that would be one solution, but you would have to go through a process of updating your zoning code to. Change the list of allowed uses to make that thing an allowed use. And you'd have to think about, is that what you want kind of throughout? Um that particular zone within the community. So I think that um would be. It would be a bigger deal, you know, to do that than to say for this one use, you know, within limits, we're going to allow it to be not more nonconforming. And I'm not saying there's a right answer on this, you know, we are really here to find out. What do y'all think? You know, is this a good idea, not a good idea um in general? So. Or with sideboards or without.
And then Amanda?
Uh Amanda, go ahead. I've spoken already.
Um, yeah, I guess I. Kind of like the idea of being flexible, like I have a hard time with super rigidity in any form. And then just like, yeah, supporting a business and letting them do what they need to do without completely relocating or like. And then I also see like, it would probably be easier to flex, you know, the current. Nonconforming use or whatever, as opposed to like rezoning the whole space or changing the rules for that zoning. Because then you're for, you know, more permanently stuck with that as opposed like if the barber shop moved out. Now we've zoned it commercial, now anything can move in, you know, it's kind of like. I don't know if that's the really direction we want to go. So for me, I like I support the flexibility. And I support, yeah, like if we can help by making small changes, then why would we be so punitive and be like, no, you can't change anything? If you want to change anything, you have to like completely move out of that, what you've called home for whatever. That's my two cents.
Anna?
I just want to offer maybe a counter perspective to that, though, is that the purpose of this whole code revision is. Um to make the standards and objectives of the code easier to understand. Um and just make I I think I think it's and to be consistent. And I feel like. If a business is grandfathered in, then that's fine. They can continue to operate under those terms. But if they want to expand, then and they're like, this is just a hypothetical, right? You know, of of the barber shop in the neighborhood. But you know, if they wanted to expand and grow their business, why wouldn't they move to a commercial area where more people could could um ask access their services? And then they would be in compliance with the rest of the other businesses that want to, you know, um, you know, be barber shops or whatever. So I just, I feel like there there's a part of me like, if if our purpose in this whole code rewrite is to just. Be um consistent and fair, I don't know why. And but I also appreciate having flexibility, but I also think it's it's better just to say, here's what our, here's what our requirements are and and we're going to have with. You know, hold everybody to these requirements. If you're in a nonconforming use right now, you can can and that's been approved, you can continue to do that. But if you want to change your nonconforming use, then you need to change it so that you are now conforming. And if that means moving your business, that's that's the consequence. After we get done with this, I I want to, I have a question about uh. Uh legal lot determination. That's just.
Right, and we're got a the pinhole on legal lot determination. Ben?
Um, I very much agree with that. It seems like this is kind of making it maybe a little bit messier to have this in here. Um a question that I had is, where did the 20 to 50% uh range come from? It's the 50% kind of makes it, you know, a little bit more sense to me in terms of the upper end, like you can't have it be more than what the building is. But I was interested about the 20% being the bottom in the example.
Carrie. Yeah, that was that was directly um arranged in the model code.
Okay.
And and Carrie, that's going to be the same for all of the um. The language that's been drafted where we've got ranges that are noted in the text, that's coming directly out of the model code, correct?
Yes, and it's been to starting point uh with the discussion with jurisdictions.
Grant? I I'm still struggling with uh it being a nonconforming, but then. Us assuming there is flexibility built into a nonconforming use, having arbitrary growth metrics that a nonconforming use can grow into. And setting arbitrary numbers, be it 20, 50%, whatever it is. I concur with fellow counselors, if if a business is already established in a place and wants to continue operating in that place and get grandfathered in. Great, they can continue to do so. If they wish to grow and expand, that is their prerogative. They can choose to do so. But I would encourage them to come into conformance if they choose to expand their footprint. Um but yeah, I I view I view the 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 parameters um as generally arbitrary in nature.
Last thing I'd like to um, I don't um, you know, I don't know if we have like a, I'm curious as to like how many. Nonconforming uses that we have like in the city in terms of like, uh, you know, is this something that. Would be potentially be a significant thing in terms of, do we have a lot of nonconforming uses in the city? And I know obviously like knowing whether they would want to expand or not, particularly if we're talking about expanding the nonconforming. Entity of their, you know, building, but that's something else I'm, it wouldn't be necessarily a question for tonight, but I'd be kind of intrigued to be like, do we have like a? Um, I don't know, like a uh a list or table or or, you know, compendium of uh here's all the nonconforming entities in the city limits. So, yeah, um that's, I'll stop on this one for now.
Amanda?
I guess I have a question also about the, there's since there's multiple ways to nonform, the we're specifically talking about use right now. Is use you, Kevin, you gave the example of like adding more barber chairs or whatever, expanding the space. But would wouldn't use be more like we're a barber shop and now we want to. Uh, I don't know, add nail or like some other, or we want to sell something or we have retail store, I don't know, like. Wouldn't that be more like the nonconforming use expansion?
Sure, I think, I mean, if you're thinking of the barber shop as a service and maybe adding a retail component, if that's not allowed in that location, sure, great example. Uh Dustin, any other thoughts?
Um, this would be, here's your example of a, and I'll make it complicated because this is nuanced. Um, 500 square foot barber shop exists in a residential zone. They want to add an ADA accessible bathroom, which would add another 100 square feet onto them. Right now, your current code would not allow it. It would say no expansion, 600 square foot barber shop, unacceptable. Therefore, the answer is no. So in terms, and that that's based around the idea that your code currently. Uh is directed and directs us to see these things diminish and go away. Not not of they're allowed to expand or they're not allowed to expand, they're allowed to exist, but never grow and accommodate. That that is, that is your current policy written into the code now. Are there examples and exceptions where. It would be desirable in the public interest to do so? We're here to discuss that. So, but that would be an expanded use.
Yeah, and I guess that's just kind of my point of being flexible is that there's so many nuances to each each specific situation that like, how can we just say, oh? You know, no nuance is allowed. Like, to me, that's just really. And I don't know about like the percentages or whatever, like that being arbitrary or if they're based on something, you know, whatever, but. I don't know.
I think I'm sympathetic to the neighbor who says, okay, so there's a barber shop next door. Now he wants to like. Bump out the back of the house and put in a second barber chair. And now there's twice as many customers in the resident. I don't think that seems what we want.
But I guess, wouldn't we be evaluating that on a case by case basis and not just saying anytime anybody wants to change their nonconformity, that's allowed? It would be like. This specific case we approve or reject. Is that how it would work?
Gladys and Ben, great.
Yeah, I I appreciate everyone's comments and think that we do have to keep an open mind. I also recognize that we are trying to uh be a little bit more organized when it comes to. The uh the code overall, but that we don't know what the future holds. And so I do appreciate a level of flexibility and that we are looking at each scenario on a case by case basis.
Great. A concern I would have about doing that, um having flexibility and evaluating businesses on a case by case basis. Is that any council will be valuing businesses on a case by case basis. Council councils, this one or future councils would approve or reject any business based on their whims at the time. Based on whatever conditions they deem fit at the time. It may or may not be relevant to whatever conditions are on the ground. Some barber shops may get an additional chair, some may not. Um, so regarding clear and objective standards, um which I believe is our goal. Um, I don't believe it makes sense to have. Addressing these things long term on a case by case basis. Um, if, again, if we have a barber shop, to use this example, in a neighborhood that everybody loves and appreciates. I also. Would encourage us to keep an open mind and say, hey, why would we not just allow barber shops in neighborhoods? So more people can enjoy glorious haircuts. Uh but that's a, that's a different consideration. But regarding this particular barber shop and others, I I would caution. Future councils from arbitrarily picking and choosing winners and losers in this nature.
But that's up to the future council, not for this one to decide what the future holds.
And.
Uh, Grant and then Amanda?
But we we are talking about shaping policy today uh and making this decision today. And this is why I'm talking about uh this this now. So that's it.
Well, I think this encompasses more than just businesses, so I think there's that to consider. And don't, I mean, I am new here, but don't we do kind of case by case things in general? Like with rezoning or anything like that, like we look at, somebody requests it, we look at it. I mean, that's just kind of what this, what happens, so.
Yeah, I would say I'll jump in real quick. For any of those things, you do have approval criteria. And you do typically have some sideboards on the extent to which somebody can do something, right? So and I think if we were going to allow some expansion of nonconforming use. We would want to put some sideboards on it. It would neither need to be a limit in terms of the percentage of expansion that could be allowed. And um probably some additional um criteria by which you would determine whether or not. It was consistent with your with your um policies, you know, so it wasn't, yes, there is a certain amount of case by case. Review that occurs, but typically it still follows a set of consistent procedures and assistant or consistent approval criteria. Um and things in that that nature. So. I I mean, I think if I'm hearing kind of different opinions about this one, whether or not it makes any sense at all, or if it does make sense. It it that it would be to provide a certain amount of flexibility and it would need some sideboard. So I think if you wanted, we could, you know, ultimately come back with what some of those sideboards might be. And what some of those criteria might be and what that approval procedure might look like. Again, conditionally, use would be one of them, so. That's just a one option here for addressing kind of some of the differences of opinions or thoughts on this one.
Certainly sounds to me like some of us are more in favor of flexibility and some of us are less in favor of flexibility.
I think what would also be helpful is knowing what the uh reason was for the inclusion of this in the model code in the first place. Like what, you know, why, why did this come about? Because it could be very well that, you know, I'm not aware of like a scenario about why. You know, what the, you know, um. You know, catalyst or whatever you want to say for uh including this in the model code was. So having that institutional knowledge, I think, would be also helpful for me if that that exists. Because like, on the one hand, like, yeah, like I I would also hate to put us into a corner where it's like, oh, yeah, well, we didn't allow that building to have an ADA ramp. Which I don't know if the American with Disabilities Act would supersede that, but you know, like, that's not a situation I want to have happen. But I'm also a little bit concerned about, that's like a significant uh increase in percentage for nonconforming use, so, yeah.
Anna?
Due to the the background, which is, we're not here to address policy issues. We're just here to, you know, the word that's, that it says in our memo here. Purpose of this project is not to address policy issues, but to improve the usability of the code, make the standards and objectives of the code easier to understand. I thought it was be clear and objective, not subjective, which is why I was thinking, this is for the purpose of streamlining. Um, you know, our our planning departments work and making things easier for you so you can point back to. These are the requirements and it's it's not to be harsh or strict, but it's, you know, the reason why we have rules and laws is so that we're all on the same plane. Streamline things. Um, I would think that somebody that's, you know, not to beat this dead horse up, the example of the barber shop and they want to put in an ADA compliant bathroom. I think they can do that if they don't expand, right? Like they can improve their own bathroom in residence and make it ADA compliant, right?
Um, can I just, can I make a request? And that's that anybody, when you're talking, can you make sure you're close to the mic? Because I I heard.
Sorry, I forgot to turn it on.
No worries. Okay, cool. Thank you.
Yeah, so.
But I heard I heard most of it, so you don't need to repeat it. Just make sure, yeah.
I was getting to the rambling phase anyway, so.
No worries.
Yeah. I'm done.
How many more questions you got to pepper us with?
I got four more after this one. There's three more nonconforming.
All right, I'm going to call a break and we're going to start again in five minutes. Thank you.
Yep.
So we've gone to the new slide for quest, for the next question. Is that okay with everybody? Uh, who wants, would like to speak to this?
All right, I'll, I'll, I'll intro this one as well. This is actually, um, where I erroneously provided an example in the last question, which is actually applicable to this question. So here we're not talking about the use being non-conforming. We're talking about the building or the site development being non-conforming. So we're talking about another non-conforming situation, but in this case, the use is allowed. But in this case, um, you've got, um, a building or a structure that's non-conforming. So it may, you know, be located partially in a setback and maybe taller than is allowed. There may be some other design features that are out of conformance. And the question here is, um, should any, um, should any increase in non-conformity be allowed by expansion? Should the, should the building be able to expand if that increases the non-conformity? And, um, right now you do allow, um, for some expansion, as long as it doesn't increase the non-conformity, but you don't allow for it if it does increase it. So like, for instance, if, if a building was built partially into the front setback, you wouldn't let it go farther into the setback. You wouldn't let it get taller within that setback. But if it's, if you got a lot of room in the back, you could make it bigger in the back, you know, as long as it's still, uh, it does, as long as that's not making it more non-conforming. So, that's what your code says now. And the question here is, should you make any changes? Should you allow something to become more non-conforming by expanding it? And then this one, the planning commission said, um, they support retaining the existing provisions. Don't allow the structure to become more non-conforming. Again, we're not talking about the use, but the, the structure itself. So, any thoughts from y'all on this one?
I agree with them on this one.
Okay.
Same.
Grant and I agree with them on this one. All, we all, the whole six, six for six.
Awesome. That was a quick one. Excellent. Okay. I will go to the next one. Also, um, a non-conforming one. This one has to do with the ability to replace or rebuild a non-conforming structure that's been damaged or destroyed. And currently your code allows for this and it allows for it. No matter, you know, how much of it was damaged or destroyed or the cause. So, you know, if something was there, and there's fire and it burns down, you can replace it in its essentially existing form or footprint. You don't get to make it more non-conforming, but you can replace it. And, um, as Dustin pointed out, because the current code says, doesn't matter, you know, how it was destroyed. Somebody can tear it down and then rebuild it as long as they don't make it more non-conforming. Because you're not saying, well, you can only do this if it's destroyed by kind of natural disaster or force measure, or whatever you want to call that. So, um, and so in this case, again, the planning commission generally, um, supported retaining the current provisions, basically saying, hey, it was there. If somebody wants to replace it, or if it is destroyed, you know, by means beyond their control, they should be able to replace it. No matter the reason for the damage or the destruction of the use. So, same question for y'all. Do you want to keep these existing, um, provisions, or should there be situations where somebody couldn't replace that thing? Or repair it?
I, I think I like this one a little bit less than number three, but I still think I agree with the planning commission on this. Others? Grant?
I don't know how to address that, but I can see the loopholes in, in this policy. I just don't know how to address the loopholes.
Yeah, when this was originally, um, or not originally, when I was reading this in the packet, I thought it was kind of odd that you'd kind of let a non-conforming use continue to happen kind of in perpetuity almost. Seems like there's a pretty well-established precedent of having that happen and, you know, uh, this is not something that I'm quite as keyed up on, especially with the planning commission generally supporting it as, as well, but I just think it's kind of a little bit odd that that's the way that it is.
Amanda?
Yeah, I can, I can see like retaining the non-conforming use part of it. But it seems like if they were gonna rebuild, why couldn't they just like move it back a little bit or? Unless there's like parts of it, the foundation or something they could reuse. I don't know, but, yeah, it seems a little strange, but what was the third, um, non-conforming use structure? And what was the other one?
A lot.
Lot, okay.
That's, yeah, so that's when the lots sort of falls below your minimum lot size, or it's a narrower than your minimum lot width or something.
Which that seems not really relevant. Okay.
Anything else on this one? And it's got the face on. Okay, we're gonna we can come back. Go ahead.
Okay, no worries. This next one is the last one we've got where we're asking about non-conforming things. So you currently do have some exceptions to non-conforming requirements, um, for residential uses and telecommunication towers. There are some state rules related to telecommunication facilities that are, um, likely to, is kind of impact how we update the exceptions you currently have to those. So we're, we're asking a little less about those, but we are asking whether or not, um, you want to retain those exceptions to non-conforming, um, residential uses. And what you say now, um, is that the exceptions are that you can, you can alter those uses as long as you don't increase the number of units. And I think there's some other limits to the exceptions. And I will note that one of the things that, at least some of the planning commissioners suggested is, um, you know, maybe it's okay even to do this if you do increase the number of units, if you're trying to produce more housing in Hood River. Or if you increase the number of units and, um, implement some affordability requirements on them. You know, maybe that's a situation where, um, your exceptions can be allowed, even if you're increasing the number of units. So sort of retain the existing language, but also kind of loosen that criterion related to it. Again, if you're increasing the number of units, but in the same footprint or, um, increasing units with some of them being affordable. So I think that was kind of the discussion we had on this one with the planning commission. But I will pause and see if Carrie or Dustin or Kevin have anything to add to this one.
No, I think generally they, uh, the planning commission had some sentiment that if in a housing circumstance, there may be opportunities for us to investigate expanding the limits of housing in, under certain circumstances, rather than just a hard no.
That feels congruent to my position that if, if it's, if it's in the furtherance of council goals, like housing, you know, density, I, I, I would be more sympathetic than, than for another, another purpose. I don't know how, that feels like, like I can see the loophole problem with them. Others on this number five? Ben's got the thumbs up. We got some, yeah, we like this one.
Excellent. All right. One left. Um, so this one, I'm sorry, I hadn't mentioned kind of where those other ones were in your packet. This is kind of towards the end of this section of your packet. This is on pages sixty-three to sixty-five. This is in the section related to enforcement provisions. And so the question here is, we, we provided some of the language from the model code that relates to enforcement procedures and provisions. And right now, again, your, your code, um, refers to Title I of your municipal code for most of these provisions. And the question is, um, should we include some additional information in the development code? Related to this, kind of a couple of comments here. One, I said, I would say that, um, at least some members of the planning commission felt like the existing language in the development code is a little vague. And so if providing more clear language would be helpful, and they found the model code language to be fairly clear, um, and straightforward. At the same time, um, I want to note that your legal counsel had some comments about this. In terms of, um, if you're including more language about enforcement in your development code, it can make those processes into a land use decision. And that kind of opens up some, um, rabbit holes and, um, maybe that's not the best term, but, um, create some potential problems for you. So I, I'm gonna stop and just see if legal counsel has anything to add to that. That was me sort of paraphrasing what I think they, they had to say.
Dan, are you there?
Yep, I'm here. Thanks. Yeah, we, my preference is to not have, uh, enforcement provisions specific to land use. It's a civil matter and we have a civil enforcement chapter in, um, section one point one zero, chapter one point one zero, civil enforcement. And it, I mean, the whole purpose, the whole focus of code enforcement is to obtain compliance. And the, that's what the civil enforcement chapter is geared to obtain. And if it doesn't work, it doesn't work, it doesn't work, then we have a process that we can march on through and get a decision by the, um, through municipal court. It's something I don't want to convert into a land use decision. I don't want, uh, you know, unhappy, enforcement respondents to be able to go to Luba saying that the city's determination on enforcement is a land use decision under state law that Luba has jurisdiction over, because state law specifically says if it's code enforcement, it doesn't, it doesn't have to be and shouldn't be land use. So tha- that's how I'd like to keep it. You can, you can provide some kind of guidance maybe for, for people to help them come into compliance. But I want the enforcement chapter to be very clearly, uh, one point one zero.
Gladys. Okay, we got, we got thumbs up on, on, we like Dan's advice. Yeah?
Excellent. Thank you, Dan.
Okay, well, we'll work with, uh, to make sure that it, it still integrates nicely with, with land use, but, if, one of the primary drivers in code enforcement is nuisance enforcement. And, uh, under, you know, common law, a zoning violation is a nuisance.
That's it for our questions. I guess I'll just see if, um, you have any more questions for us? And then we can just briefly talk about next steps in the process and, and kind of wrap things up. So, any, any other questions for us?
Anna, you graciously.
Oh, there was a lot of record, yeah, verification.
You graciously set aside your lot question. Do you kind of have it for us?
Um, yeah, actually I talked to Kevin about it and I'm, I'm clear.
Okay, we, we took, solved it on the break.
Excellent.
Great. Carry on, please.
All right. Yeah, so just kind of a, um, going back to next steps in the process. So we will update, um, the, the recommendations or the, um, potential code updates in module one, based on what we heard from staff, planning commission, you all. There might still be some kind of options or questions in there for future discussion. But we will be updating that. So that's kind of our next, one of our next steps. I mentioned this video, we're working on that. So that's another next step. We will start to think through what's the most appropriate, not start to, but think through what's the most appropriate time to conduct those interested party meetings? So we can get those scheduled and make everybody aware of when that's happening. I think, you know, um, when we conduct these brief, um, questionnaires or surveys, we want to make sure they're one, short, two, meaningful to people, and there are questions that are going to be meaningful to people. So there may be one or two we can ask from this module, or they may kind of wait until we get into the next module, but we'll start to line those out and kind of set a cadence for those. And then we will, um, continue to move forward on the work for module two. Again, we've already gotten started on that and that will be, I should have added at least a sixth item on here, which will be to come back to y'all and the planning commission. With that next chunk of work and, um, a set of discussion questions there as well. So that is where we're headed next. And, um, Carrie or Dustin or Kevin, anything to add to that?
Um, the only thing to add is the next work sessions are gonna be out of order. The council is going to be meeting about module two before the planning commission because of summer schedules.
Okay. Kevin?
Yeah, on July 21st, the only meeting that the council has in July, we'll, we're going to bump the planning commission's meeting to accommodate that. So we'll bring your recommendations to the planning commission on August 4th.
Thanks for guiding us and leading us through this. I sort of, part of my brain is sort of chuckling, which is, I can imagine in the coffee shop, some of the conversation is like, yeah, why don't you guys just revise the planning, the development code so like houses cost 260,000? So, you know, it's a tough task that we all have in this time and thanks for your, thanks for helping us.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks for having us.
Okay, we'll move on to city manager comments.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no comments for you tonight.
Committee reports, starting with Amanda.
I don't have anything either.
Grant?
As mentioned, the Region One Act is a meeting, the strategic one is in July. I checked the date and it is July 21st. Um, there was some confusion as to the date last meeting. So it is, it is indeed on the 21st. So if you guys have any, any input for me, last call for that. That's it.
Do we have a provision for sending a sub when like you're here on the 21st or? Cause that's our point, that's our city council meeting.
I guess I'm doing two things at once. I'm, I'm going to be, I'm going to be sending in comments anyway.
Great.
Because I will be in Minnesota, so I'll be logging in remotely. So.
Sort of doing three things.
Be doing three things at once.
Well done.
So, yes.
Okay, thanks. Um, do you want to talk at all about your comments to the senator on Saturday? As a bridge person, no? Right. Gladys, committee?
Uh, I, we have not met for MACAC. I do owe you all a county update. My work has kept me very, very busy. Session is over in two weeks and I will give you a better update at the next one. Thanks.
Ben?
Uh, I'll be meeting with CAT Vice Chair Megan Ramey on July 2nd to just catch up on CAT stuff.
Anna?
No updates.
I have a couple of things. We had our Housing Authority annual meeting today. A couple of highlights of that is, uh, the Mariposa Village. And there's another quite large project underway in the Dallas of about 70 units. So something like 200 units in the development, active development stage between those two, which is a 50% increase. Currently, the Housing Authority has, owns 435 homes. And so like, there's a lot going on. It's really exciting and a lot of money's coming in and a lot of work and good job them. And then just like an anecdotal thing, I think it's interesting. One of the projects that the Housing Authority does is they have a little pot of cash to try to convince or lure landlords to accept the housing vouchers that we have. Like, yeah, I don't want to rent through that program. Well, we'll give you $500 if you will. And so just sort of, it's sort of seemed like a hooker by crook kind of a thing. Like just trying to get the systems to all work. Sometimes we have vouchers and then we can't find a home to use the voucher. And so it just, yeah. Uh, I wanted to comment on the Rowena Fire, which happened since we were here last. Thanks to Chief Damian. I can only imagine what sort of workload that was. And to Chief Holstein, I was stuck in that impressive traffic jam. And I'm sure we all have stories. My colleagues like slept in the office and slept in Housam and stuff like that. So wow, when the freeway shuts, it impacts us so much. And it inspired me to sort of go back and do some math. The Eagle Creek Fire cost $36 million and this fire destroyed nearly 60 homes, which I don't know how much those are, but if it was half a million of insurance each, that's $30 million. So this, this is a huge fire, even not just in the misery category, but in the dollar category, because Eagle Creek, only one home was destroyed. So, uh, what a huge June craziness we had. And thanks to everybody for your hard, hard work on that. And I was on a couple of interesting phone calls with the governor's office and with McEd and with Wasco County and with the United Way. There's a Rowena Fire Relief Fund that's been stood up. So, uh, there's, there's ways that everybody can give to the, a centralized fund for that, that then those agencies will distribute. Um, yeah. So that's my report. We'll go on to council comments, starting with Anna.
Um, I just want to acknowledge that the Juneteenth celebration last Thursday was awesome. It was really fun. I really enjoyed getting to be there and work with Councilwoman Gekie. And, um, it was fun. It was just really neat. I, I, um, there's something about just community gathering that lifts your spirits and you run into people that you don't always get to see. And it was just, it was really fun. So, um, I think that's all I've got.
Ben?
Yeah, echo that sentiment. There was some really good, uh, music there. My favorite one was the, uh, somewhat quasi acoustic cover of Buy You a Drink by T-Pain. They absolutely crushed that. Um, I don't remember the name of the band during that time, but it was during my shift there. Just a really great, uh, celebration. Um, yeah, that's it for me.
I also had an opportunity to join Juneteenth and echo my peers that it was, uh, great to see such an incredible turnout from our community members and appreciate Black in the Gorge and all the other organizers that supported those efforts. Uh, I too want to thank our staff for supporting the Rowena Fire. What a tragedy for, for some folks who, as Mayor said, lost their homes. And, um, that's the beauty about living in a small town is that we all rally together and support each other in these times of need. I also wanted to thank staff and our community organizers for being proactive for the No Kings protest that took place last Saturday, right? Last, or two Saturdays ago? It's important to recognize that these sorts of peaceful protests will continue to happen, but I do appreciate folks being proactive and coordinating with the city and the businesses nearby to ensure that there are ways to mitigate any sort of risk and safety plans.
Grant?
Oh, sorry, I missed the Juneteenth event. Some came up, couldn't be there, had to go do other things. On, that was a Saturday? Saturday?
Juneteenth was on Thursday.
No, no, no. Um.
Wyden, Saturday, yeah.
Yeah. All my days just blur together at some point. Um, Senator Wyden was in town on Saturday at the high school. I went to that, um, on behalf of the Bridge Authority. Thank the Senator and his staff for his work in securing the $200 million infra grant. And, uh, thanked him again for notified or talked with him and his staff with the upcoming application from the Bridge Authority for the bridge investment program on another, the remaining balance on that stuff. So hopefully we're able to be successful on that side of things and actually get this thing built. And everybody in the audience is enthusiastic, was enthusiastic and excited about getting the thing built. So yay. And that, that was a well-attended event. Everybody was engaged and concise with clear questions. And I had to duck in and out because I had Piper with me. So I had to do, again, double duty, but it worked out, worked out well. It was a good crowd. Good, good vent, good town hall.
Amanda?
Hmm, the only thing I have is to forth the kudos to Black in the Gorge for throwing a great, uh, Juneteenth event. And it was really nice to see just like all the organizations and people who had tables and artists and everything there. Yeah, just everyone coming together to celebrate. It was good.
One final reminder, we are off schedule in July. We're having one meeting and it's on the third Monday. So like, we're never on the third Monday, except we are in July. And then in August, we have just a single meeting because we're skipping the fourth Monday. We're going to be only on the second Monday in August. Okay? Anything else? We're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Yeah, as much is remaining for to be raised. So how much?